Thank you guys for tuning in to the Virtual Candidate Forums hosted by Teaching for the Culture. My name is Bianca Goolsby and I'm the founder and I'm here to say thank you for being here, for being engaged and being intentional with who is going to be in our school board seats. Our children deserve the best and we want to make sure that you are operating and you're listening very closely to what these candidates have to say. Thank you guys so much for following us. Make sure that you take a look at our website, www.teachitfortheculture.com. In addition to that, follow us on social media at Teaching for the Culture. Just a couple of rules. I want you guys to relax, have fun, and also be intentional with what the candidates have to say. If you post your questions, we will screen it and if we have enough time, we will make sure that those questions are addressed as well. Thank you to the community that have submitted questions to us and we are excited to get started. Good evening, everyone. My name is April Cobb and I will be your moderator for tonight. Just a little bit about me, I'm a veteran teacher here in Hillsborough County Public Schools and I am a youth advocacy mentor for my nonprofit Blueprint for Girls. So let's go ahead and get started. Teaching for the Culture Candidate Forum follows the nonpartisan, unbiased, and impartial format. Time limits for all comments will be strictly enforced. In fairness to all candidates and the audience, we ask that these limits be respected. Each candidate will have two minutes for opening remarks to introduce themselves. I will then ask questions submitted by the audience, so that we can address as many questions as possible in the time available. Each candidate will have one minute to answer each question. If time permits, candidates will have two minutes for closing statement. In fairness to all candidates, we will rotate the order of how these questions will be answered. We'll go ahead and get started and we're going to alphabetical order here. So Elvis, take the floor.
How you doing? My name is Elvis Pickett. I'm a local pastor here. Been pastor 14 years of Tampa native. I've mentored and I've coached. My work as a pastor has positioned me to assist the parents that face challenges in their children's school. All decisions should be made in the best interest of every child. I'm committed to ensure school maintains a safe teaching learning environment, promote community and parents' involvement, making sure our students have access to innovative, enriched learning experiences, advocating for safe school bus transportation, and safe paths for our students. And I want you to know that if you elect me as your school board member for District 5, I directly have student focus, accountability, and a voice for all.
Thank you for that. We're going to move forward with Ms. Tamara Schamberger.
Hi, thank you so much, April Cobb and Bianca Goolsby for hosting this forum for us tonight and thank you for your service of course to our students and our community. I am Tamara Schamberger, your Hillsborough County School Board Member. Elected to this seat in 2016, serving as your District 5 School Board Member is one of the proudest things I've done. Over the last four years, I've taken a deep dive into trying to understand and unpack the longstanding and generational issues that have kept our students in the back of the pack. District 5 is fully ablaze, on fire, with issues that continue to burn away and destroy the future of our community. The public education system has long had its knee on the neck of our children, suffocating their opportunity for success. And so I'm appalled when I see a basketball being used to campaign for this seat. The plight of our Black students and our staff members is not a game. We each have a duty to create Black opportunity, not to block opportunity. And over the past four years, I have worked tirelessly for this community to help create opportunity. The African-American graduation rates have increased by over 31%, we're at an all-time high graduation rates right now. We've put better teachers in front of our highest needs students. The discipline issues have decreased. I've supported a sustainable teacher pay plan, paving the way for well-deserved, better teacher pay. And our community business partners are doing much better as well. The school district spends an average of $2 million per month with Black-owned businesses. I have been a strong and effective advocate for our community and I've only just begun. I look forward to serving another four years on the school board, working ever more diligently to strengthen our community. And I ask that you stand with me. You can find out more about me, sign up to volunteer, or even make a donation at www.kieptammer.com. Real leadership, proven results.
Thank you very much for that. We're going to move forward with Mrs. Selena Ward.
Hello, can you hear me? I'm sorry, I was just thrown out a second ago.
Yes ma'am.
Alright, thank you. Hello, I am Selena Ward. My grandmother worked as a high school janitor for 30 years and every day after school, I went to her job. Education has always been a part of my life. My love for serving is deeply rooted. My service, community service record is too long for me to share in these two minutes, but you've seen me. You've seen me at Sulfur Springs Elementary School passing out backpacks. You've seen me serving. Reason why you may not recognize me is because I don't seek recognition. I'm not chasing the camera. I'm not looking for Facebook likes. I am serving the community. The reward is in the D, not in the recognition. I will be a leader that is there serving, listening, and being involved daily. The last couple of months and tonight, you're gonna hear a lot of common buzzwords, so get ready for it. But not for me. Tonight, I will reveal my 90-day plan when I'm elected as your next school board member. District 5, I know you're tired of injustice and tonight, I ask you to be tired of poor education. The same people doing the same things year after year with no results. It is time for a fresh new perspective Tampa. A good friend of mine here in Tampa says, "A new broom sweeps clean." Well, I'm a new broom with a fresh perspective. And as they like to say, I'm not from Tampa, but I am here now. I've seen a lot of things and maybe it's time for someone with some new experience. My phone number is 813-444-5872. I give you that because I work for you and I always will be available for you.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Selena Ward, for that. Mr. Henry Shay Washington, we'll move forward with you, please.
April and Bianca, for having us here tonight. I was born and raised here in Tampa, Florida, and I'm running for Hillsborough County School Board District 5. This is my home where I was raised at in Tampa, Florida. I am truly a graduate of Milton High School of 1968. Go Tigers! And I love Tampa, Florida. Also, I attended the Kentucky State University on a football scholarship. And I served 22 years in the Florida National Guards and retired as a first sergeant. I also served 42 years in the Hillsborough County Schools District and I started out as an assistant teacher and I retired as an area superintendent. We are here tonight because we want the best candidate for the job. And I feel I'm the best candidate for this job. Because when I look into District 5, when I see 19 schools, who are 19 schools, really it's 22, but 19 are elementary schools on the achievement list, and you have three schools, two middle schools, and one K-8 school on the achievement list, we need to make changes. We need to do what's best for Hillsborough County. And I am the guy. I am the guy that's going to do best for Hillsborough County. Because this takes me back to 1968, when I was a high school senior at Milton High School, when we had all the turmoil going on. And that's the same year, that's the same year when Martin Luther King was assassinated in my senior year in high school. So all the turmoil that I see now takes me back to that point. And we, we must change the system. You've got to change the system in order to be successful, for students to be successful in the Hillsborough County School District. I am the person, we can work together to change the system. So please, vote for Henry Shay Washington. I'm the only Shay in Tampa, Florida. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that. Sorry about that, guys. So before we start talking about specific issues and discussions about District 5, let's establish a foundation on what are the roles and responsibilities of a school board member. We will start this rotation with Ms. Tamara Schamberger.
I kind of like to hear what the other candidates have to say, seeing that I'm the only candidate with experience as a school board member. So I do know my role very well. And so let me help educate the community and the other candidates on what that is. One, first and foremost, we are policymakers. We are responsible for revising and implementing policy that really is the law of the land of the district. Two, we oversee the superintendent and hold him accountable for the results. Where the board issues the policy is the superintendent who carries out the procedures. We also oversee and ensure that the superintendent comes up with a balanced budget. Here in Hillsborough County, I have helped oversee a $3.3 billion budget. And then, of course, we deal with constituency services, excuse me, and advocating for our students and families of Hillsborough County.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Schamberger. We'll move forward with Selena. Can you answer the same question, please?
Thank you for unmuting my mic. Could you repeat the question again? Because I just want to make sure I understood it.
In a nutshell, we want to know what are the responsibilities for a school, roles and responsibilities for a school board member. And just hang on, let me restart the timer for you, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you so much for repeating the question. Also, thank you to the incumbent for giving us that politically correct definition of what a school board member is. Yes, I would be a new school board member, the same as she was four years ago. But the one thing that she missed when she gave that eloquent answer is that a school board's responsibility, member's responsibility is also serving the people. That means being involved with people, having a roundtable, which is part of my platform, having a roundtable where people can come to me and speak to me and tell me their concerns. A good school board member does not sit high and look low. A good school board member visits schools weekly, talks to their constituents, their students, their teachers, their staff, and their parents. So when I enter a school, there will never be a question of, "Who is your school board member?" And an employee doesn't even know. So those things are also great that we do do that, but we also have to make sure that we serve the people first, because without them, there would be no need for a school board member. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that response. Mr. Washington, you're up next.
What, well, Ms. Schamberger, right. They do have responsibility to policies, procedures, and the budget. But me, as a community person, I think it's so important for you to be in that community. Because you have to be out there in that community where people know you and be accessible to you. And you know something else? When you're in that community, people are going to criticize you. You can't be, you've got to be tough-skinned. I mean, that's the part, that's the part that's most difficult. But you have to be out there in that community. You have to take criticism. But you've got to be out there and listen to what people have to say about the community, about the school, and about the students. So it's so important to be there. Be there for the community. Be there for the people. Be there for the students. Be there for the parents. That's important. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your response. Alright, Mr. Pickett, you're up next.
Well, I think the responsibility of the school board member would be most definitely balancing a budget, would be also holding a superintendent accountable, being a policymaker, most definitely an advocate, a community partner, as well as a listening ear. I believe what's very important in 14 years of my service already as a pastor, I believe that you always have to be a servant leader. You have to know how to be a problem solver. You also have to bring accountability and connect people to the resources that we have available. I do believe that we can make policies all day, but if we're not advocating to make sure those policies are followed and holding people accountable when they're not, then we're wasting time making them. We have to be most definitely involved and engaged with things in the heart and the pulse of our community. That's what I believe a board member's responsibilities are.
Thank you very much for that response, Mr. Pickett. And I will add to that, my little own toot my horn. You know, as a Hillsborough County Public School teacher, you know, a lot of times, we aren't always in the unknown. We don't know exactly what, who does what, but we do know how to get in front of those children and teach. So moving on in front of the, in front of, for the next question. We're going to start out with you, Mrs. Ward. An individual school board member has no authority. Only the board as a whole can make decisions for the district. What skills or traits will allow you to contribute to the effective operation of the board as a whole?
Yes, thank you so much for that question. Well, you hit it on the head. A school board member does not operate alone in a silo. So one of the things that is very important is a school board member has to realize that they have to make partnerships with the people on the board with them. Unfortunately, we have witnessed some, sometimes when advocating turns into a situation to where we're not comfortable. I will be sure to be a partner and advocate for what we need here in District 5 without burning bridges. It takes more than one vote for policy to change. You can't do it alone. So you have to make sure that you're working as a team with everyone sitting up there. It takes a teamwork for policy change and for real change in District 5. And I believe in partnerships. My years serving in the United States military, I've always had to serve as a partner, even in tough times. So you have to be willing to listen to others, bend sometimes, and expect them to do the same for you, demand them to do it for you, so you can be effective in District 5.
Thank you very much for your response. Up next is going to be Mr. Washington.
Important to be flexible. See, the key word is being flexible, because you're dealing with, you're dealing with other people on that board. You have to be flexible and also you have to be a team player, a partnership. And you have to be able to go across the aisle to negotiate for the things that you want. Because many a times, when you don't negotiate for the things that you want, then your district goes down. So you've got to be in there fighting every day for what you want and understanding what's important for that district too. Because that district is just as important as your district, but you've got to work with them as a team to be successful and do the things it takes to work as a team with a listening ear, so you can be successful, negotiate, and be a team player.
Thank you very much for that response. Mr. Pickett, you're next.
Yes, ma'am. I believe that what you have to do also, I think that's very important, is relationship building. And I think one thing that's very important, your policies and whatever you are bringing towards the board, it need to make sense. I think that it need to be analyzed. It needs to most definitely be beneficial to students. And I think that everyone on the board has an obligation to do what's best on behalf of students, teachers, administrators in our community. So you have to most definitely be action-oriented. You have to be an unafraid leader. You have to most definitely be a listener. I'm also very passionate, determined, and reflective. Those are the things that I will bring to most definitely make it happen in District 5 with other board members that we have.
Thank you very much for that response. Ms. Schamberger, you're up next.
Thank you so much for the question. And so, yeah, you cannot get anything passed without four votes. And I'll tell you how I have been successful as a school board member and getting everything that I have brought forth passed almost unanimously 100% of the time. It starts with respect. It starts with being able to be a center of influence on the board and being able to influence other board members really is about being consistent in your messaging, caring for the concerns of the community, and making sure that they are engaging with all board members, being vocal and being transparent in your concerns. Communication is always key. And I tell you, for the last four years, I have served this community well. We have pushed our agenda forward and we have complete respect of the other board members because of my representation and my ability to make that influence on the board.
Thank you very much for that response. So our next question, we're going to start with Mr. Washington. It says, "For the second consecutive year, the Hillsborough County School District has the largest number of schools on the state's list of persistently low-performing schools. Describe the achievement," sorry about that, guys, "describe the achievement gap in this district. What causes it and what can you do as a school board member to influence change in the district?"
I think one of the, one of the things to influence the change in the district is to go to the new teacher orientation, because we need to have teachers in front of students that, who are certified in that particular elementary level. Because the most, the most certification is in elementary. Teachers are absent a great deal, sometime in elementary, and we don't have enough teachers in elementary schools. We need to, we need, in order to be successful, we need to have those teachers certified in front of those students every day and understand, and understand what they need in order to make that school successful. Now, quickly, in order to do that, you need to be certified, you need to know about PBS, and that's Positive Behavior Intervention Support, in order to help those students to be successful, so they will continue on in their grade levels.
Thank you very much for that response. And I got to flip pages, guys, just a moment. Next up is going to be Mr. Pickett.
Thank you so much for that question. My answer, most definitely, I was always told that if it's, if it's not broke, don't fix it. Well, it's broke. And I want to most definitely bring something that can fix the problem. I was sitting there and while I was contemplating something, what can fix our district in District 5 in the schools? Because this is historically been a problem. This isn't nothing new. And I came up with a VAM effect. We need a VAM effect. That's Black Achievement Matters. We most definitely need to engage that with the representation of students, parents, administrators, teachers, and community members. We need to deal with it from the components of ABCs. That's attendance, behavior, and common assessment and curriculum. We need to most definitely, when I'm your board member, I'll have these monthly meetings, meetings with these people at the table, students, parents, administrators, teachers, and community leaders assessing these things, increasing attendance and engagement, making sure that we're reviewing the referral data and suspension data, making sure, we're making sure that we look into interventions and positive behavior structures, also comparing to see the gap between our curriculums, that the progress in monitoring learning. Thank you.
Thank you for your response. Next up, we have Ms. Schamberger.
Thank you again. So first, I want to say that it's very important that we understand your question. The question was, "What can a school board member do?" And we've not really heard that yet. So I want to know that there's only two things that really a school board member can do in regards to our perpetually and persistent low-performing schools. And that's creating a strong policy and strong and heavy accountability of the superintendent. As your school board member, I brought forth the Achievement Schools policy. And that policy, it dictated that we could only have the highly effective or effective teachers in front of our highest needs students. So we want to make sure that we have our best assets where we have the most to gain. And it is through that policy that our students are doing better. We also advocate as school board members with our State Department of Education when it comes to VAM or the Value Added Model, making sure that we are adequately assessing our teachers and giving them the opportunity to use the craft that they do so well and they have learned in school, which is teaching. So policy and holding this superintendent accountable is how you advocate as a school board member.
Thank you very much for that response. Mrs. Ward?
Thank you for that question. Now, we've talked a lot about policy, but let's, let's be real here. Policy is not any good if you don't enforce it. You see, I worked as a substitute teacher before COVID-19, and I was in District 5 schools where there was not a third-grade teacher. There was a substitute in that class. Why would you have that? See, if you create a policy, and that's fabulous, but you're not making sure it's being enforced, then you might as well not have the policy. It is time that we start demanding for resources in District 5. District 5 is, has the lowest and the most failing schools. We should have highly effective teachers in our classroom. There should not be any exception to that. If there is a class that goes without a teacher, it should not be in District 5. And what we do, how we do that, is when we build partnerships and when this problem becomes a school-wide Hillsborough County-wide problem and not a District 5 problem, then our other board members will then join us and make sure that we have highly effective teachers. They will join us to make sure that we have the resources that our children can do.
Thank you. Alright, those responses definitely made me get a little excited as a Hillsborough County Public School teacher. Those responses definitely seemed as though they would push us in a direction that would, you know, make my life a lot easier. Moving forward, a community member shared with us their thoughts, followed by their question. Here's their statement. "Collaboration is lacking in the government to truly solve the inequity dilemmas that we are facing. The well-being of the student and his or her family, in example, broadband, housing, food deserts, sidewalks, does not start when the student arrives on school grounds, but his or her well-being begins in the home and the neighborhoods where she or he, he or she lives." Based on this statement, it leads to our next question. We're going to begin with Mr. Pickett. "How will you advocate for establishing new policies and practices that break down the existing silos between the school district, the county commissioners, and the city of Tampa mayor and city council in the name of closing the education and wealth gaps for the families in District 5?"
Well, great question. I think dealing with that, it's, again, we talk partnership. And we have to be willing to not minimize our ability as a board member to just two components, and that's policy and holding the superintendent accountable and the budget. I think we have to be able to understand that we have to pledge to do more, because in District 5, our students need more, our community need more, and most definitely, our administrators need more. And what we, what I will promise to do is to make sure that I build that partnership. I go over to those different entities. I make sure that I advocate on behalf of our students in District 5, asking for more resources, seeking how we can get resources from county commission, because economic empowerment and housing is very pivotable to our students. We have some students that goes from one house to another house, to one school to another school. And we cannot expect those people and those students to have a good learning environment when we sit here and understand that they're going through so much more than just the surface-level things. And so as your board member, I can promise, what I'll do is most definitely build partnership and work across the house.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Schamberger, you're up next.
Thank, I am really proud of the relationships that I have built with all of our local elected officials and our state legislators as well. One thing that we talk about often and that we sit around the table and really strategize around is education. We know that education cannot be stable if our communities aren't stable. And so I have advocated to our city council, our county commissioners, our mayor, our state legislators to help our families become more stable. Here in Hillsborough County, we have an issue with transience. We have an issue with affordable housing, and our kids are just being moved around and it definitely affects their education. So education is not just a school district issue. It's not just a parent issue. It's everyone's problem. And so if we don't coalesce and come together, we will continue to have the problems. I am proud of the work that the other electeds are doing, other community partners, business partners are doing with wrapping around our students, getting them ready for school and keeping them stable. I'm proud to work with our new superintendent as well on this issue.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Ward?
So thank you so much for this question. This is a great question. So another part of my 90-day plan is creating task force. And one of those task force would include elected officials. Now, for example, the digital gap that we had just experienced with the COVID-19, where we realized so many of our students did not have internet access. What, did you know that the county commission, one of the commissioners was working on a program to expand that capability? The two groups aren't talking to each other. You have them all working in silos, just as the question stated. So part of my 90-day plan includes having task force that meet quarterly to discuss these issues. The right hand doesn't know what the left hand's doing, but yet we're all working for the same city, the same students, the same families. We have to sit at a table together. And that table cannot be a selected group of elected officials. It needs to be elected officials that represent the entire city, that can use their partnerships and their relationships to help District 5. Let's be real, some parts of this county have a lot more connections and a lot more funding than we do. We need to tune in on that and that's our benefit.
Thank you very much. Mr. Washington?
I realize what we need to do is build partnerships, because it's so important to build those partnerships with those, with those communities. And, and, and start a community, start, have committees on the community that's from that community, so they know more about what we need to do. It's great to have elected officials, but we also need on that community, people who live in that, who live in that community and know what it takes for that community to survive. Because economic empowerment is horrible. We need to work on that. Family, we need to get the families together. We need to get the communities together. We need to get rid of- We need to get rid of, of that poverty that we have in those communities, so those students could get an education. Got to build those relationships. We got to start talking about adult education, so everybody can get on the same, on the same tune of music, so we can be successful. But the key is getting committees together from the community, where we can work and, and build relationships with the county commissioners, with the city council. That's important.
Thank you very much. I know, um, in that question, it did not include, um, those good old school teachers, but it definitely would be great for them to be brought to the table in efforts to identify, you know, those good, those needs that are definitely highlighted in that question. So we're going to move forward, and Ms. Schenberger, you're going to be the one to start out with this question. It says, "The recent events in our nation have shined a spotlight on the apparent conscious and unconscious racial biases in our institutions. What are your thoughts about it? Would you support turning the tables of white supremacy?"
Would I support turning the tables of white supremacy? That absolutely has to be eliminated. Listen, I've been very vocal lately, I'm sure most folks have saw me on the news speaking about the injustices that, um, we have faced. But our Hillsborough County School District is really no different. We have an issue with longstanding systemic and institutional racism in our classrooms. It happens every day. I'm proud to be a part of a board that in 2016 passed the, our first ever racial equity policy that deals directly with this issue. Um, as Chair of the Board, I flew in an expert to meet with the superintendent and his staff and the board to talk about race relations in our schools. This is something that absolutely has to stop. When we talk about equity, we need to make sure we first and foremost eliminate this racial equity barrier. All kids have a right to be in schools, uh, free of harm, safe from any discrimination or biases. And I applaud Superintendent Davis for taking a strong unforgivable stance on eliminating racism in our schools. I applaud him for having a zero tolerance policy. We must continue this work.
Thank you very much. Up next is going to be Ms., Mrs. Ward?
Yes, a zero policy is the only answer, especially today or yesterday even, before this happened, we should have always been focused on this initiative. The issue that I have is that we are being reactive instead of proactive. Diversity training, inclusion, inclusion training, these type of trainings should be happening in our schools. We should not have to suddenly find out after reading something on social media or somewhere that a teacher's had issues. We have to listen to our students, listen to our parents, and take these type of issues seriously from the very beginning. We also have to train, train, train. We need to start being proactive when it comes to racism and not reactive. Now, there is a time to react, and we are reacting now. But in our schools, we have the children in our hands. We can break the cycle there, but we have to be proactive and work on implementing policies and day-to-day procedures that include diversity. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pigott?
Yes, I most definitely, uh, plan and always will interrupt racism. I believe that, I live that, that's why I've been at the marches. That's why I've been most definitely vocal concerning what cannot happen in our county, in our state, and in our nation. We have to be culturally responsive to what's going on. All schools' employees need to be having a racial equity training. This needs to be at each school, this need to be formed. We need also forming our schools a social justice committee. I really believe that with our students, they need this. Uh, it was rewarding today to see our kids, young, walk to march about what's going on here with George Floyd on this, this morning. Also, we need to make sure that this is on and going. Too many times in our district, we've have one and done different things. We need to keep this going, we need to most definitely know that when you, you need a board member that's going to create this, uh, BAM effect, and we're going to interrupt racism by far. And that's why we need Black Achievement Matters.
Thank you very much for your response. Mr. Washington?
We definitely have to denounce racism, because we can't have it in the school system. Because it's so important for our black and brown kids should have equal opportunity, especially with black boys. Because we're, they're the ones that's a target to most of the black boys. And the example of cultural awareness with teachers and administrators is very important. Because we need to have those, we need to have that in place when you're dealing with, with racism in the school system. We can't do that. But you know the key word here? The buzz is equity, but the key word is systematic. We have to change the system in order to survive and be successful. And how do we change the system? We have to have the mindset, the work at diversity, the work at diversity, the work at diversity, to change the mindset of people. That's what we have to do, because we can't continue doing this. We cannot, we cannot succeed in Hillsborough County or anywhere in America doing this.
Thank you very much for your response. And with so much that's going on in the world today, without words, we definitely have to take a stance and make sure that our allies, our friends, our family, whatever it may be, have a position on the matter, because being silent, in my opinion, have gotten us to where we are today. Mrs. Ward, you're going to start out next. First for us on this question, where do you stand on school choice options outside of the district-managed option?
Yes.
In support or?
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
April, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, great.
Yes.
Okay, so school choice, first of all, there is, the whole school choice argument, um, is, is huge. We have choices within Hillsborough County. And I know that that question always comes to me, because I have two daughters that are in a choice program at Robinson High School. So I know a lot of people, you, you already know that, so you know that I'm in favor of that. And that has been great, because my daughter wants to fly. My oldest daughter wants to fly an airplane, and she just passed her safety test, gotta throw that out there. So she, her next step is she will be able to start taking flight lessons. And Hillsborough County School District provides that type of program, just like Middleton has a, a choice program for students to attend. Now, I believe it is important that neighborhood schools are funded first. And I also believe it's very important that we make sure that our neighborhood schools serve our neighborhoods first. We should not be turning schools into magnet STEM or choice programs and then busing our children all the way far away to where if they miss the bus, they can't go to school. We need to make sure our neighborhood schools are first priority. But having the opportunity for such program is a plus.
And thank you for your response, Ms. Ward. I will acknowledge that I made an error on the last rotation. I inadvertently put Mr. Pigott in front of Mr. Washington. So just so that you know that it was an honest mistake, um, the person up next is actually Mr. Washington for this response.
Okay, we're, we're, we're talking about school choice. I think.
Yes, are you for it or against it?
Oh, okay. I, I am, I am for what's best for the student, because I've always been what's best for the student. Now, school choice sometimes takes you out of your neighborhood where you have to go to another area. And I don't think that's right, because we should have the same opportunity in all schools in Hillsborough County, not have to go to another school. Even though when I opened up Milton High School, we had the STEM program that was very important. But we need to have school choice, because some students, my, for example, my daughter, my daughter went to Hillsborough High School, she, she was in that program. She's now a doctor, and I'm proud of that. But because she had choice to go to Hillsborough High School, it's important. But in some cases, school choice could be very detrimental to some students.
Thank you for your response. Next up is Mr., let me make sure I mess this up, guys, hold on, hold on, hold on. I don't know why I'm getting confused, y'all making me nervous. It's going to be, where are we, where are we, where are we, where are we? I still had time anyway. It's gonna be you, Mr. Pigott, I'm sorry, I don't know why I'm nervous.
No problem. I am most definitely a strong component of school choice. I'm for it. And the reason is because we're dealing with kids, and our students are different. They all learn different, they all have different needs, and they all have different, um, things that they need to be able to, uh, partake in. Magnet programs, IB programs, options is good. But what we do need to focus on why I'm for that, I'm also for making sure that we, we strengthen our, strengthen and take pride in our neighborhood schools and our feeding pattern. Because our school, our feeding schools, we need to make sure that those schools are strengthening, those schools have good, uh, uh, structures, and they also have good environments where our kids that are there can learn as effective. So I'm for it, it, I'm a component of it, I believe that it is necessary. But what's very important, again, I say, is we dealing with many different students, with many different desires, many different needs, and we need to most definitely keep those options open.
Thank you very much for your response. Ms. Schenberger?
Thank you again, you're doing a good job, by the way, and you look beautiful tonight. So let me say, as a school board member, you cannot be against choice. Choice is the law. As a school board member, you are a constitutional officer that is sworn to uphold the law. But let me remind everyone that public school is a choice. In fact, it is the biggest choice that most families make. And so we far outperform other schools like private and charter schools. But there's two things as a school board member that I have really focused on when it comes to the whole charter versus public debate. Um, first of all, I hold the superintendent accountable for making sure that our public schools are the first and the best choice for our families. And how do we do that? One, we want to make sure that we have good programming options. We want to have the most options in our schools, and we actually have that, and we outperform charter schools. But also, we have to stop this fight with charter schools. See, our focus has been wrong. We have to stop focusing on regulating charter schools and instead focus on deregulating, um, public schools.
Thank you very much for your response. We're going to go ahead and move forward with the next question, so we can make a great attempt to get through all of the questions. And we're going to be starting off with Mr. Pigott. What top three priorities should be on the district's legislative advocacy plan to address equity in the community?
Could you read that question one more time for me?
Yes, I will. What top three priorities should be on the district's legislative advocacy plan to address equity in the community?
Well, I most definitely think that what we need to do is finding, uh, teachers, making sure that we're funding, uh, teacher pay equity. I think that we need to most definitely, uh, when we prioritizing that, I think that teachers are important. I think the, um, that the school, how we conduct ourselves, in, in other words, when I say that, in safety should be, I would look at it like this, I'll say teachers, I'll say safety, and I'll say our students being able to learn in a safe environment. Think, is, is things that I think should be my first three priorities that I'll focus in on.
Thank you for your response. Mr. Washington?
With that, with that, I, I would say the quality, the teachers is most important. And also, and also not only the teachers are important, the administrators at the school is important, the community is important, the community, the parents, all those are important when you are talking about, when, when you, when, when you explaining this situation. So all three of those are important, the, the teacher, because you want to have the teacher there, the community, as well as, as, as administrators at the school and at the district office.
Thank you very much for that response. Ms. Alina?
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Yeah, now, if I understand the question correctly, you said the top priorities on the legislative side. So the top priorities on the legislative side, first of all, for Hillsborough County, we can go deep, but the first thing we need to do when we talk about equity, we need some basics. Our schools need to look like everyone else's schools. We shouldn't have bats in the ceiling, we shouldn't have grass grown from, we want our kids to, to do better, but yet we send these, these conditions that are unlivable, that other parts of this county would not even dare let their child attend. So we need to first get our basics together, that's what we need to do first. But then, if we're going to the state and we're gonna advocate for something, we need to look at how we're spending this Title I money. Now, the Title I money, we need to decide if we're either gonna fi, follow the state's guidelines, or we're gonna keep, uh, asking for these different levels of tiers that I hope to explain to you more on my 90-day platform, on how we're spending our Title I money, and which is actually taken away from District 5. And then lastly, the achievement gap. If we're gonna go to Tallahassee and advocate, we need to make sure that we understand the Florida Department of Education's, uh, plan for education, and they have.
Thank you very much. Ms. Schenberger, you're next.
Thank you again for the question. The first legislative priority, funding. The second priority, funding. The third priority, funding. This state has woefully lacked funding for public education. With adequate funding, we can do everything. We can, one, we'll have money for adequate and appropriate teacher pay. When we talk about e, equity, we need to make sure that we retract, uh, attract and retain the best and the brightest teachers. We need capital outlay dollars so that our schools will be nice. So every student in District 5 has a nice school, has the same equitable resources as any school in this state. Also, it's important to have funding for safety, the hardening of our schools, and of course, transportation. As you know, many of our students in District 5 walk to school. Um, we lack crossing guards, we lack all types of issues in District 5. So funding, funding, funding. And for the last four years, I have spent my time along with the other board members in Tallahassee fighting for these very things. We meet with our legislators, we meet with the Department of Education, we've even lobbied in DC. But funding is the most important.
Thank you very much. Okay, so I'm gonna have my transparent moment. These eyes are not as, um, focused as they used to be. So I wrote myself some little Cliff Notes with letters, but it just did not work. So let me try to get this order together one more again, not one more time, but one more again. So this question is going to be started out with Mr. Elvis Pigott. And the question is, share the work you've done or visits you've made to elementary, middle, and/or high schools in the community you plan to serve in the past six months.
Wonderful question. I mean, goodness, the list goes on with the schools and the things that I've done. Um, I visit frequently, uh, many of our elementary schools. Uh, mentor, we have a gentleman scholar's program that is at She-High Elementary. Also, I visit Palm River Elementary. And also, we have a program that at King High School, uh, not only just the high school, I've been, I visit Lewis Elementary. Uh, I've been to many of the schools within District 5. But also, the work that I've done is being most definitely, not only advocating, uh, for our students to make sure that they have what they need, to make sure that the parents are informed with what's taking place with their children. But also, I've worked with teachers to make sure that they have incentives and different things that they can give to the children. Uh, also, my, uh, work that I've also done within District 5 is, again, as we know, uh, I'm always mentoring and making sure that our kids know who they are, feeling valued. I spend my time in District 5, uh, and I've done it not just the past six months, but for the 14 years of my past career.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Ms. Schenberger.
Thank you again for that question. So I have visited every, almost, almost 230 schools in the Hillsborough County School District. But being a school board member is not about visiting schools, it's about making sure that you're getting the schools what they need. And so I spend a lot of time talking to teachers and principals in the area superintendent. But I tell you, every day, I show up in the schools. When the kids walk into their schools and they know that they have the best and the brightest teachers in front of them, that's because of my Achievement Schools policy. When our kids can show up and they go to lunch and they can have a hot meal, regardless of their socioeconomic status, that's because of my student nutrition policy. When our students show up and know that we're not gonna tolerate racism and implicit biases in our classrooms, and they're safe and they know they're gonna be treated fairly, that's because of my support and implementation of the racial equity policy. You see, we have to stop thinking that being a school board member is about photo ops. It's deeper than that in District 5. Until we have, every school is an A, until every teacher has what they need and they're happy, it's not about visiting, it's about getting the work done.
Thank you very much. And next up, we have Mrs. Ward?
Yes, so I haven't visited schools in District 5 in the last six months. I've worked at them. See, I, I understand that there's a teacher shortage, and I am a former educator, so I went back to work with Kelly Education, working at the schools. And I've worked at as many of them I can, from elementary all the way to high school, with a goal to hit every school possible for the school year in it, and except COVID came in. You see, I do wonder a little bit about the statement that was made earlier that everyone knows, because I've been to many of these schools, and people did not know who their school board member was. But I will tell you this, if you go ask someone at any school that I've worked at, they know my name. They know who I am, because I was there with the students, taking the classes that they couldn't get a teacher to take. And many of those principals asked me to take a full-time job, because they knew I was a, a former teacher. They wanted me to be the full-time sub. I have talked to parents even as a substitute. So I'm not at the schools for a volunteer moment or. So I'm not at the schools for a volunteer moment or a photo op. I'm there working with the students as a teacher.
Thank you very much. Mr. Washington?
I say, being a school board member is about visiting schools, Mrs. Schamberger. And I think it's very important to visit schools, because when you go visit those schools, you have opportunity to walk to the classroom, meet the students, and meet the teacher. Because many a times, if you don't visit those schools, and you haven't visited those schools in three or four years, then people don't know who you are. That's the key. Visibility is very important as a school board member, and I know that for a fact. I'm not a school board member, but I have been an area superintendent. And I'm at schools all the time, because I'm there talking to students about being successful in life, the things that they need to do. I'm out there talking to the parents, because I'm in all these organizations that helped out at schools. Because my priority is students first, is students first, then you have the teachers, and then you have the parents, and you have the community. So I'm very visible in the community, and I'm there to speak with the Tony Dungy Foundation, with ProDads. I'm there talking to students all the time. And it's important for students, teachers, and parents to know who you are. Every school I walk in, they don't know me because I worked in the school system. They know me because I'm Shays Washington.
Thank you very much for that response. We're going to go ahead and move forward. And this question is going to be addressed by Miss, nope, Ms. Schamberger. In one minute, please provide the community a snapshot of your first 90-day plan if you are elected. Or not your case, it should be reelected.
Thank you so much. And let me just do a rebuttal. Mr. Washington, you being in schools for the last 42 years has been detrimental. We've had the most failing schools in Hillsborough County under your leadership. And so I have an opportunity, hold on, hold on, but I can rebut, right? That was a part of the rules. So I just want to state that. And in turn, like, I have an option to rebut, so being a, being a school.
Hold on, Ms. Schamberger, hold on. We said that we weren't doing rebuttals.
Okay, so when I clarified the rules, they said I could rebut. So, okay, I'll move on. So, and can you repeat the question? My first 90 days is reelection, so we're going to continue the work. We're going to continue moving this needle forward. Right now, we have gone from a monumental amount of failing schools to now down to just one. We're going to continue to make sure that our students are getting the equity and the services that they need, and that our teachers have the services that they're need. We're going to simply continue the momentum of all of the impact that I have made in District Five over the last four years. We have done great, but we still have a lot of work to do. With the new superintendent, new to this district, it's important for consistency, and that's what I will do. Continue the great work.
Thank you very much for your response. Next up is going to be Mrs. Ward.
Yes, thank you so much for that question. Well, I do have a 90-day plan, and I'm excited about it, and it will launch tomorrow on my website. The first thing I want to say that we may need to do in my first 90 days is rebuild some bridges. Because I want to make sure that we haven't lost and burnt some bridges during the previous years, because we definitely need those partnerships. But I'm going to create some task force, and that first task force will include teachers. I will sit down with them. I'm going to tell you about the task force first, and then what we'll do. It's going to be a task force with teachers, and there's going to be a task force that is a combination of what, parents, teachers, and staff, and then a task force with just staff. So three, teachers, staff, and a combo one. And then we are going to sit down and we're going to have meetings to discuss the issues in the school, because I need to hear from them to understand what they need. And then we are going to also hold me accountable. I will be sending you a survey quarterly for you to rate me, for you to tell me what I'm doing wrong and what I'm doing right. Because without you, then what am I here for? And also, not only will I meet with those task forces, I will meet monthly with you.
Thank you much for your response. Next up, Mr. Washington?
My first, first of all, my first 90 days in office, I want to meet with the staff, the superintendent staff, talk to them about certain things that we need to do at the schools in order to have those schools successful. Then I want to move out to the schools itself and meet with the principals, and so we can get together and find out what we can do to help those achievement schools. Because there's a lot need to be done in those achievement schools. Then I'm going to move to the community, because the community is very important, because they need to have input what we are doing to be successful in those achievement, in those achievement schools. And from that point, I'm going to visit all schools, I'm going to visit the principals, so they'll know who I am and what they need, because we got to give the principals the autonomy in those first 90 days to make selection. If you're, if you're a principal and you don't know your school, you should not be a principal. So I'm going to make sure I visit with those principals, because they know what they need at those schools. And I'm going to convey that back to the staff, the superintendent staff, what is needed.
Thank you for your response. Mr. Pigott?
Yes, my first 90 days, I will most definitely have the BAM effect. As I talked about that, my biggest priority would be our Black Achievement Matters program that will most definitely involve our students, our parents, our administrators, our teachers, and our community members. That's very important to deal with the ABCs, the attendance, the behavior, and the common assessment and curriculum. I want to also make sure that we keep in mind that we're dealing in our students and our parents are dealing with, and our teachers, yet a COVID-19 problem. I want to most definitely reassure that our students are feeling safe, not just physically, but mentally. Because our students is taking on a very, a very bad situation, and I know our students need to be most definitely made aware that we care. And I want to most definitely make sure that we have racial issues, town halls. In my first 90 days, COVID-19 racial issues and town halls is what we would be focusing on. I want to make sure our teachers are safe, and we're doing the right things when we get ready to go back into school. And so if I'm your board member, I most definitely will hear the heart of our teachers and our parents to see how we can transition, getting our kids to the place they need to be in our district.
Thank you very much for that response. I just wanted to, you know, go back to Ms. Schamberger and not a question, just a statement. We do know that there are opportunities, there will be opportunities hopefully in our runoff, that there will be a rebuttal time. But we just wanted to keep this particular forum tonight, just an opportunity for the people in the community in District Five to be able to get to know all of the candidates, because we know there are so many moving parts in our district that no one can honestly sit here on the other side of the screen and say that they've had an opportunity to meet you all on a one-on-one, or possibly even in a group setting. So we just wanted to keep that opportunity to where now we're just addressing the people.
My apologies.
So up next is going to be Mrs. Ward. No problem. I just wanted to clarify, I didn't want it to be viewed as, you know, anyone was being treated unfairly. So we're going to start out with Mrs. Ward. What district policies need to change immediately or be added that will impact District Five?
Well, the first thing with the district policies that need to be changed, you know, when we talk about equity, like I said, we're talking about basics. Why do we not have soap in our classrooms? And I know there's a lot of comments going, is she a sub or is she a teacher? I was a teacher in California. My husband is in the military. We have traveled. I've seen many schools, and I substitute, because I've traveled. But I am a former, I'm a former educator, and now I have served as a substitute. But the first thing we need to do is we need to look at making sure that we have money being spent in the correct places to make sure that our schools are safe and clean. The basics, the very basics. We can't get deep until we take care of the basics. So I hate to answer that so, so simple, but we need to make sure that our kids have a clean environment, safe environment first, before we can do anything. If they're, if they're not safe and clean, how are they going to be able to learn? So that's the first thing I would do. Look at the budget and make sure that we have adequate money being spent on just soap and natural products that our kids deserve.
Thank you very much for your response. Mr. Washington?
Repeat the question for me, please, ma'am.
The question was, what district policies need to change immediately or be added that will impact District Five?
I think the first policy that needs to be changed is we need to fund it, the budget. Because you need to have the budget so it can suffice for what we need at District Five schools. We need to, we need to go by that. Secondly, resources. We need good teachers, and we need minority teachers. We need to recruit minorities teachers for our black and brown students. And the only way we can do that is go out, when you go out to recruit teachers, you need to have black and brown candidate, black and brown people out helping you to recruit teachers. And the recruitment is so important in black and brown schools. We have to change that. Because when students look at you, they need to look at somebody they can relate to. And I think that's very important to have those resources there.
Thank you very much for your response. Mr. Pigott?
Yes, it is very clear. It looks like we forgot that we lead the state in the prisoner pipeline. Many students in our school to the prisoner pipeline have learning disabilities, history of poverty, abuse, and neglect, benefits from additional counseling and educational counseling services. We need to address these issues. We need to most definitely provide services and look at our discipline policy at all schools. We need to make sure our school leaders need to be trained, and our teachers. And what's very important is how we can assist them. Our discipline policy need to be reviewed, it need to be changed. We can't just play with it. We have to aggressively attack it. We have to aggressively change it. We can't just continue business as norm, and we need to make sure that we have proper wraparound services that our students will be able to benefit. Our ESE policy in this district is, it is not good at all. Those students with ESE problems, deal with, we deal with them the same as the federal allow us to do it. We need to change that.
Thank you for your response. Ms. Schamberger?
Thank you again. So student achievement by far is our priority. And so we have to make sure that our lowest performing schools is our priority. And you know, I'm happy that our current superintendent, Mr. Davis, has implemented a new plan, a new robust plan to get our lowest performing schools off of the state's lowest 300 list. None of our Hillsborough County schools should be on that list. And so with his new transformation zone, it's going to be an ICU intensive care, if you will, of our lowest performing 29 schools. And so I am quite impressed with his plan, and so we have to give him an opportunity to implement it. And through consistent, tried and true leadership on this board, I'm going to work with him side by side to make sure that all of our schools get what they need. All of our students deserve to be an A student, in A schools with the best teachers and the most resources. So student achievement is what this is all about, guys. This is about education. We have to make sure that we are setting our students up for success. And so priority number one is getting our students what they need. No more of DNF schools in District Five starting today.
Thank you very much for your response. Our next question is going to be started off with Mr. Washington. According to the latest FSA data, 73% of our third-grade babies were not proficient in reading. We know reading is the foundation of a strong formative education. What is your vision for reading instruction in District Five? How do you plan to accomplish it?
Number, first of all, we have to get certified teachers in front of our students. Because one of the highest, one of the highest absentee rates and so forth is in elementary school. We need to get certified teachers in front of those students, so they can teach and understand and do what's, so the students can understand, so they can be successful. Number two, we have a teacher shortage. We have to recruit teachers. We have substitutes in front of those teachers, in front of, I'm sorry, in front of those students. So we need to get certified teachers in there. And we also need to go to the Hatties Research Report, because the Hatties Research says that you need to have certified teachers in front of those students in order for those students to be successful and not be able to repeat. That's important. Look at the Hatties Research, and it will give you all that information that we need in order for those students to be successful and come out of that literacy area.
Thank you very much for your response. Mr. Pigott?
Well, I believe that we need a strong phonics program in our, in our, in our district. District Five, we need to ensure that our teachers teach a rigorous of standards. We also need to make sure that we have small group instructions. It's key to meet those needs. A lot of our students need that small group instruction. I was fortunate to go to some of the schools and take out time with that teacher. With that small group, it works. It's very beneficial to most definitely walk with our students in the reading and making sure that they're understanding it. Because not all of our students, and we have to understand that, could read at the capacity in a large group setting. And so pulling them off in those small settings, it works, which means we need to make sure we have the funding to adequate, put more resources in those schools, to have more coaches and to have people there that can do the small group settings for our students.
Thank you very much for that response. Ms. Schamberger?
The achievement gap starts in kindergarten, and that's an issue in our community, a large issue in our community. And as your school board member, I have held the superintendent accountable for those results. And as a result, the school district has implemented some great early childhood learning programs to assist with getting our community children ready for kindergarten. We even use a lot of our empty spaces in District Five schools to house early childhood classrooms, whether it's a VPK or a school readiness. We are committed to making sure that our students start and ready on time for the rigor of public education. I tell you guys all the time that our kids must be ready for school, that a ready child starts with a ready family, then a ready community, then a ready school. And so we don't need to prepare our schools for kids with backpacks. We have to prepare them by sending them to school with a heart that's set on learning and a mind that's prepared for the challenges and a mind that's set on their success. We have to rethink how we're getting our kids ready. But as a school board member, I'm going to continue to hold the superintendent accountable for partnering with the early childhood folks and make sure our kids are starting ready.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Ward?
Yes, that's a great question. And as your next school board member, I do agree that we are, need to improve the third grade. And there's been some great things said, yes. I've been in the classroom. We don't have teachers in the third grade. And why that has been allowed, I do not know. So we need highly effective teachers in the classroom, but not only do we need them there, we need to figure out how to keep them there. Retention is also something we need. We don't need them there just one year. We need them to remain there. The superintendent has introduced a phonics program, and phonics has traditionally, across the nation, has proven to help with improving reading scores. When I worked in Compton, California as a language arts teacher, our reading scores improved. We had 11 graders reading at a third grade level, and I have in my 90-day plan how to help do that. We also need to, as it was said just earlier, early childhood education is important. We need to identify students that need extra help and create partnerships to make sure they can get the tutoring and the extra support when they're away from school, as well as teach parents how to help their children. We need to work together.
Thank you very much. Our next question is going to be started off with Mr. Pigott. Elected officials have a tendency to become disconnected after winning an election. How do, how have you or do you plan to continuously hear the voice of your constituents?
Well, again, that where that BAM effect comes into play, because my constituents, along with those people that would be in that committee, that community voice is very important and is necessary. One way I know that I will always be connected is I will always be a servant leader. I will always, that's all I know. That's why I'm capable of running for school board now, because I've been that leader in the community. I've pastored here 14 years. I love the people, and the people most definitely know that I'm a voice they can depend on. The people know that they can call me, and I'm going to make things happen. I will never change that, because that's who I am. And one thing I believe, that you cannot let the office make you. You got to make the office. I will always stay true to who I've always been.
Thank you for your response. Ms. Schamberger?
Thank you so, thank you so much. And it is very important to stay connected. Here in District Five, you have to be willing to keep your head down and focus on getting the work done. But as your school board member, I have kept an open-door policy. I'm always accessible. As you guys know, I keep a heavy social media presence. Most people have my cell phone numbers. I also host a constant amount of small group meetings and town hall meetings. I'm in constant contact with a relatively large group of teachers and administrators. I meet with our bus drivers, our custodians, our maintenance workers. But I tell you, every day for the last almost four years, I have had a conversation with the parent. Keeping in contact and hearing from our parents, advocating for the rights of our students is first and foremost the biggest thing to do. You see, you have to be willing to stay focused and keep your eye on the prize. We're always pulled out of the role as school board member because somebody wants a personal favor. I tell you, until District Five is performing better than every other district, we can't worry about personal favors. We have to keep focused on our students. And I tell you, I love the community. I love the calls that I get, and I will plan on continuing staying connected with them that way.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Ward?
Yes, all right. Could you repeat the question, because I got a little lost after that?
No problem. Elected officials have a tendency to become disconnected after winning an election. How have you or do you plan to continuously hear the voice of your constituents?
Okay, that's what I thought you said. Well, first of all, I started off with giving you my phone number. Let me give it to you again. Now, I, I have two children in the system, and I know plenty of parents, and I have yet to have seen or been invited. And, and I have yet to, to have seen or been invited to a community roundtable with our school board member. And I, I'm, I wonder, ask yourself, if you're out there listening, do you know about these meetings? Are they private meetings? See, when, part of my ninety day plan is to have meetings where everyone is invited. And my social media presence will be that. You will be notified before the meeting, not after the meeting happened, not forty-five minutes before. You will be notified before the meeting in plenty of time. So I will stay connected, not only by visiting and being at the schools weekly. I will stay connected by listening to you and having those roundtables that everyone is invited to, not a select few. We are voting a school board member, not a prom queen or a prom king. And being from here does not give you that.
Thank you very much for your response. Mr. Washington, you're next.
I've never left the community. I've always been active in the community. This is why every time you see I'm in the community. And I don't have to talk about me being in the community. People tell you I'm in the community. Because it's so important to have input from, from parents and the community personnel. It, it's important to do that. Um, the community, every time you walk in a school, you can tell how the community is. And I'm in all the schools, all the time with the community. I'm always available. I'm always accessible. I have people that call me all the time. Shay, can you help me with this? Can you do this for me? Because that's who I am. This is my community. I love my community. I am from Tampa, Florida. This who I am. Shay Washington is from the community because the community made me. And I'm always out there helping people, whatever the case may be. And whatever you need, if I'm avail, I'm always available, accessible. Just give me a call and I'll give you my private cell number too. Eight one three, four zero four, three zero seven eight. You can call me anytime. I will be there to help you because that's the person I am.
Thank you very much for your response. I look, I know I had a few numbers, but let me add to my list. It seemed like I need to add some numbers, you all. Y'all throwing out numbers tonight. So our next question is going to start out with you, Ms. Schenberger. It says, what would you, what would you want to see in the superintendent's budget to address equity?
Yeah, absolutely. So the budget does, it should always encompass equity, right? And equity means so many different things. Equity truly means just really overcoming barriers to ensure equitable access to education. And so we want to make sure, one, that our teachers are paid properly. Eighty, over eighty-five percent of our budget goes to teacher salary. We want to make sure that we're using the budget to retract, to attract, excuse me, and retain the best and the brightest teachers. When we have the best in front of our students, we can help overcome some of those obstacles. But we want to make sure that we have funding to implement our racial equity policy, to make sure that everyone is receiving the implicit bias training. We have started that. We need to continue that to make sure all twenty-four thousand employees in the school district receives that training. But we need to make sure that resources are equitably distributed. We want all of our District Five schools to have technology which they woefully lack, that they have clean floors, that they have nice schools to go to, that they have absolutely everything that every other school has. And as your school board member, I go through the budget, a very complex budget, to make sure that our students are receiving what they need. And so our superintendent understands that. He stands with me, he's working with me, we work with, um, our CFO as well. And as a matter of fact, I currently chair the school board's finance committee because it's just that important to make sure that our kids are getting what they need.
Thank you very much. Mrs. Ward, you're next.
Yes, well, the first thing I want to say, the great thing about this new superintendent is he will stand and work with the school board regardless of who's sitting in that seat. So that's a great thing that he is going to be able to switch up very quickly and, and work with whomever is there. You know, equity is a buzzword that is often thrown around. And when, when we talk about equity, I am glad that we are hearing more about the basics that our school needs. And I won't go on about that again because it, it's been brought to the attention now and it's, it's playing out. But let's, let's piggyback on something that was just said about budget and teacher pay. Now, achievement teachers receive extra money to work in, in achievement schools. There's different tiers and different salaries for that. We still have vacancies in those schools. Teachers cannot be bought. They need resources. So throwing them an extra salary does not create equity. We need, now money's nice, but we need to provide them with the resources and the training so they can be effective. That is important. Also, when we talk about equity, we know we don't have the parents that can spend all day at the school. So we need to make sure that we create environments that the parents, yeah, I can go on all day. Ninety day plan will be on my website.
Thank you very much for your response. Mr. Washington.
We need funding in those schools for resources. We need training for teachers and administrators. We need a cultural awareness and equitable, and equitable practices for, for those, for those teachers. We need the bonus money. We need achievement school teachers and administrators. We need money for the, for the curriculum and, and supplements for, for needed students. We also need leadership in those schools. You need to put the right leaders in those schools. Because when you put the right leaders in those schools, teachers will follow them, teachers will follow them. It's not about money, it's about leadership. And leadership is most important when you are in achievement school because you need somebody you can follow, who you believe in, can get the job done.
Thank you very much for your response, Mr. Pigott.
Well, I want to most definitely direct my answer to what would I like to see as a board member in the superintendent's budget? Uh, we just discovered when we had this crisis of COVID nineteen, that our kids had to be sent home to do their learning with e-learning with laptops. Where many of our students, and if a parent had five kids only, and three of them was at the same school, it was only one laptop per child. I really would like to see resources into those schools to make sure that we have one-on-one devices. Especially if we're talking about sending our kids back to school, we're going to need it. I want to also see in our superintendent budget that he, as well as the board member and me, what I will advocate for is the referendum dollars that we voted for. We voted for it and we've received over a hundred and fifty million dollars already to date. We have to understand at the end of the day that District Five schools need a facelift. When kids feel good about their school they go to, it increase attendance, it increase engagement. We need to do better. And I would love to see in the superintendent budget that he tackle making sure our schools look good.
Thank you very much. Our next question is going to be started off by, with Mrs. Ward. Hillsborough County Public School leads the pipe, leads the prisons to pipeline in the state of Florida. What policies and work as an elected official will you commit to do in order to combat the systemic issue?
Yes, the, the prison pipeline issue is huge. Um, I'm a mother of an eleven-year-old. And right now with what's going on in the world, we definitely need to focus on our boys and we definitely need to focus on this issue. The first thing we need to do, and we keep talking about this tonight, is we need to make sure that we improve the third grade. We know that the third grade is the decision maker on how many prisons are being built. We, first of all, that is horrible. But we need to make sure that we focus on our third grade. And we need to partner with our other school board members. We need to go to Tallahassee and make sure that we're receiving adequate funding to make sure that we can close the achievement gap in the third grade so we can get rid of this, uh, survey that they're doing, these results that they're using to build these prisons. We have got to address the issue. If third grade is where it's starting, then we need to start with kindergarten and make sure that our children are prepared so they don't have the data or we don't give them the data that allows them to build prisons based on data from education of our children.
Thank you very much, Mr. Washington.
We need to do, uh, the school to prison pipeline is utilize restored practices. So we can get to the root of what, get to the root of the problem to reduce incidence of recurrence. Because so many times, ki, the same kids are, the same kids are being suspended over and over. And we need to understand the student background and be proactive instead of be reactive. And we also need to rela, eliminate the, eliminate the suspension. We want to keep the kids in school because that's where important because we can eliminate some of those petty referrals by having efficient and effective teachers in front of them. And last but not least, positive intervention and support. High and good support staff, such as behavior modification, specialist psychology and success coaches, working on social skills so those kids can make the right decision. And this will require a change in mindset, attitude with teachers, administrators, S R Os and parents.
Thank you very much for that response, Mr. Pigott.
What an answer. I most definitely want to talk about the school to prison pipeline. Uh, I'm fortunate to sit here today to even be a candidate, knowing that I was on that road. Uh, on that road because suspension seemed, when I was growing up in school and in high school and, and middle school, that suspension was all they knew. But it was something, and I'm grateful for different, uh, leadership because they had something when I was growing up called peer mediation. I think that it's necessary that we get back to that. We need to put restorative justice practices in place, not to be so quick to suspend our students. Peer mediation is needed. They need to be taught by counselors how to do this. Mindful that many of these things that's taking place in our schools is happening through social media. This is social media beef that carries over into our schools. We need to find ways to connect and make sure our feel, our students feel connected through mentoring clubs, programs, will also increase attendant rates. We need to go back to the communication and the, the community and relationship. We need to do better with reaching our kids to keep them out of that system.
Thank you very much, Ms. Schenberger.
Thank you. And so as a school board member, I have really worked hard on our behavior plan or what we now call a behavior management plan. Many, many of you may know that as our discipline policy. It is very critical that we work on a restorative practice system versus the very punitive system that has plagued this system for so long. As many of you know, our black male students are overrepresented in the juvenile justice system. And through my advocacy, I have created two critical positions in the district that really help work with this. The first is our African-American and multicultural outreach coordinator. Ms. Lenita Lucas works hard engaging around this particular demographic, helping our students to succeed. Out of that came our judicial, um, equity advocate, Ms. Ashley Thornton, who works with our D J J population to make sure that our black male students especially have fair and equitable representation. And then even out of that position, we have our parent liaison positions who bridge the gap between our families, our community and the school. They stand in the middle where our parents just don't know how to navigate the system. This is about implementing effective policies and procedures and positions to bridge that gap to stop the school to prison pipeline.
Thank you ve- very much for that response. I'm just going to, um, chime in really quickly. That is something that is very dear to my heart as an educator and have always worked in the alternative school setting, um, for twenty-two years at this point. Started out as, as a sub myself as well. And if we don't do something to shift this narrative as it relates to our black children being basically put on a path that is nothing more than a doomsday path for them, we're going to have bigger issues than what we have today in our current society. The next question is going to be started off with you, Mr. Washington. What is your vision for education in this community?
That's a great question, and, and thank you for asking me that question. My, my vision for education in, in this community is, is to have the community involved in decision making, decision making at schools. Because when, when, when the community is involved, then we can get the right information, what we need for the community. For example, when we have decision making for education, we need to have the community involved. We need to have the clergy one there. We need to have advocates there sometime to help out with those decision making processes because they are from the community and they, and they know, not only do they know, but they know the neighborhood and the people who are involved in that situation. So it's so important to have them involved also. And adult education, we need to have adult education. When I was the principal at Milton High School, they said only twenty percent of the people had an education in that area, high school diploma. So what did I do? I put in adult education because the community told me what they needed. So the community is so important. That's why I'm a community person. You know, we can't make it at the top, always at the top. The top, the top don't work in the community.
Thank you very much. Mr. Pigott.
Could you read your question one more time for me?
Just a moment. What is your vision for education in this community?
My vision, I always remember, and I'm always saying this, that I was at one time a student in District Five. It is my vision, it is my heart, it is my passion, that I will be able to be your board member to represent, to make sure that I leave District Five in a better place than it was left for me. I believe that my vision is to make sure our students have a great and safe learning environment. Make sure that they can have a place where they are proud of, to learn and to be most definitely, uh, pursue their vision, pursue their passion in learning. My, also, my vision is to make sure that we have safe school buses and we have transportation for our students. It is by all means my desire to see the BAM, the Black Achievement Matter Program be launched out, that our kids can feel good about themselves accomplishing goals. I want to see in District Five, our students graduating, going to the college, going to Marines, going to the, uh, Air Force, going to the service, doing what makes them not only for them, but for their family. It's time in District Five that we allow our students to make a legacy for their families.
Thank you very much for that response, Ms. Schenberger.
Thank you again for that question. First and foremost, we want to make sure that education is fair and that it provides equitable education opportunities for all students to succeed, regardless of their zip code or their socioeconomic status. We want to make sure that education is properly funded so it has the resources, uh, that we need to make sure that that happens for all students. Listen, every student, every student deserves to be an A student. Every student deserves to be in an A school. And so that's why we want to make sure it happens. At the end of the day, after my second term, I want to make sure I can walk away saying that every student has been prepared for life. Every dis, every student deserves an opportunity to be successful.
Thank you very much for your response. So right now we're coming to our closing statements. I would like to definitely applaud.
You forgot me, you forgot me.
Oh, I'm sorry, look, I'm going to close this thing down.
That's okay, that's okay.
Ms. Schenberger finished up early, so that threw me off, but go ahead, Mrs. Ward, my apologies.
My vision for education is quite simple, success. I want to see our students be successful. Every student deserves that. We should be building tomorrow's leaders. We are building tomorrow's adults. And the problems that they are going to face, we need to make sure that they will be able to be competitive and successful in the world that they will be living in as adults. That is our job when we're in education. And yes, home plays a huge factor. But let's be realistic, home isn't always what, what happens with some people. I have lived several places, I'm not from Tampa, but I have seen communities like ours work together to make sure that our children are successful. It is time that we demand in Tampa that education provides successful results. No longer failing schools. I want education in our district to be successful.
Thank you very much. So back to that same comment that I was getting ready to say, our statement is that we're coming to our closing statements. Just a friendly reminder that they are two minutes in length because we want to make sure that we honor everyone's time here tonight, along with our audience. We're going to start back with Mr. Pigott. You have the floor.
Well, I want to appreciate Teaching for Culture as well as you, April Cobb, for doing such a phenomenal job in moderating this forum. I'm very happy at this moment, just the fact of being here and being considered to be a voice for this district. As you see behind me, you see the yard sign that says, a change that we need and a voice that we deserve. It is that time. Not only advocating we're in a such different climate that we are standing in with George Floyd's death, but we need someone that's going to be aggressive, tenacious, and most definitely determined to get results. I want to let you know that I appreciate everyone out there that's standing, fighting on behalf of this injustice, but it don't stop here. It don't stop until we go out to the polls and vote. I'm asking you to know with a certainty, I have the passion. I have the heart, and I know for a certainty, I have the voice to get things done. Do me a favor and visit ElvisForSchoolBoard.com where you can give a contribution to help us continue to carry this walk and to continue, to continue to be the voice that you guys really deserve. Our kids need us, and I've said now, I'll say it again. I want to be the voice for this community. And I want to leave this area and leave District Five in a capable hands of someone that can carry it behind me and leave it in a better place than which I found it. I found it in a place that we need so much work to be done. But when you elect me in no, in August, surely in November, I know for a certainty, you guys will be proud. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here, and I hope that you continue to let God bless you and may heaven smile upon you. Thank you. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and I hope that you continue to let God bless you and may heaven smile upon you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Piggott, for that response. Next up, we have Ms. Schenberger.
Thank you again, Ms. Cobb, for your great moderation tonight and Bianca Guzbi as well for your continued advocacy for our community. Um, I don't need to take the whole minutes because for four years, my work has spoken for me. As everyone can see clearly tonight, I'm the only candidate who understands the role of a school board member, the only candidate with experience, tried and true leadership, real leadership with proven results. With the new superintendent at the helm, not quite fully familiar with the challenges we face in our community, it's important that we keep consistent and reliable leadership in this community. As you guys know, in the history of the Hillsborough County School Board, as the only third black elected female to the Hillsborough County School Board, I've been a vocal advocate for this community. Never shying away from controversy, never shying away from calling out the superintendent when this community has been wronged. And I'm going to continue that advocacy for this community. Our students deserve the best. We don't need an established candidate who's done nothing for decades in this community. We don't need folks who think they know about this community because they're new to this community. I hope that the other candidates will stand with me because for four years, they've not been there. Not at a school board meeting, not at a district committee meeting that's properly advertised weeks in advance. Not at a town hall, not anywhere. But for the next four years, I'm going to continue to work hard for this community. We're going to change what's happening in our community. Stand with me, reelect me, Tamara Schenberger, Hillsborough County School Board, District Five. Find me again at www.kiptamara.com. We've done good this first four years. I just need one more term to get the work done. I hope my other opponents will stand with me and they'll take the time to learn what true advocacy really looks like and what this job is. Thank you again for allowing us to speak tonight.
Thank you very much. Next up, we're going to have Ms., Mrs. Ward.
Yes, the first thing I want to say is that I have respect for everyone. I recognize that everyone tonight is a true leader. Because they have the courage to run for this office, to volunteer in our schools. In some capacity, they have done something and they are a true leader. And I will not spend my time taking that away from them. You know, there's an old saying, "I don't have to blow your candle out to make mine shine brighter." Now, what I do know is that it's time for some change. It is time for someone that is willing to work together with the community for our students. You see, it keeps being thrown around that I'm not from here, that I wasn't born here. Well, doesn't that sound familiar of a former president of ours where we were worried about where he was born? And now we're doing that to me. Yet we talk about equity and discrimination. So be careful. I am here working because I want to work for the community. I'm part of the community. Let's continue to work together and build this district the way it should be. The people in, before me have started the mission and now I'm ready to continue the mission. We deserve better. We can do better. Let's work together. It's time you vote. Selena Ward, School Board, District Five. The one with accent that's not from here, but she's here now. She wasn't born here, but she's adopted.
Thank you very much for your response. Mr. Washington, you want to close us out?
April, I'd like to thank you and Bianca for doing a great job. You're, you're a great moderator and it was really great being on the show. But you know, I understand the difficulties in District Five because I'm an advocate and for black and brown students because they deserve the best opportunity in, in, in District Five. And you know, lastly, I want to talk about part of being a school board member is visiting schools and also encouraging, also answering emails, which is important. Also calls and knowing the community and not showing up for photos. I think that's very important. That's got to be important because we don't want school board members just to show up for photos. We want school board members to be involved in the community, involved in the community. So I want you to vote for Shay. Vote for Shay Washington. Hillsborough County Public School Board. You vote www.shayforschoolboard.com. And also I'm going to give you my private cell number again because I want to be accessible. I don't want, I don't, I don't want the people to put out rumors on me. If you got a problem, call Shay Washington and I will give you the answer. My number is eight one three, four zero four, three zero seven eight. And you can call me at any time. Because I'm here, I am here for the people. I am always accessible for my community. And, and remember, I'm tough skin. Thank you.
Thank you very much for that response. To all our stakeholders watching now and on the replay, thank you for attending. Please take a moment to locate the link to our one question poll in the comments, comment section below. Which candidate would you vote for that best meet the needs for the children in District Five? I would like to thank Teaching for the Culture for hosting, let me go back, for hosting this actual forum here tonight and all the candidates for their participation. Be sure to join Teaching for the Culture next Friday for the District One Forum. Thank you for you all attending and good night.